Meeting is being recorded. From the meeting of the Hinsdale School Board to order.
Seven sections.
And I see that all the members are present. We have a forum of the board. And I also want to note for the record that this meeting is being recorded. The first order of business is to call for nominations for board chair.
A nominee, April.
Is there any, any other nominations that we need to consider for the, for board chair? Hearing none, I will, any discussion? Okay, nominations are closed. I see that, who, who seconded that motion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, congratulations. It's all yours.
I'm going to create a motion for vice chair. Hello, Holly? Any discussion? Any other nominee? Any discussion? Hearing none, one of the questions? I think it was probably added to the list. But I still. Any opposed? Well, having trouble with.
Hold that.
Any abstain?
You know.
Motion moved, probably vice chair. Congratulations. Is everybody done yet? That's just going around. This room?
Yeah.
Need a motion to accept the public nonvolunteer minutes on March 1st?
What was your motion?
Second. Need discussion? I know, I'm crashing my thing.
Will we abstain because you don't have to, it's not necessary.
No, no. Just because we weren't there. No, not. All, all those in favor of starting with minute? Hi. Any opposed? So. Motion to accept the public minutes on March 28th. I'll make that motion. Second.
And I just have one amendment. Where it says the superintendent only works point six hours per week. So it's a point six position, but he doesn't only work point six hours.
That would be funny.
Yeah.
The only other. It said that. Asked when the budget would be available and it said April 7th and I thought it said April 14th.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Oh, yeah, after contracts are offered, we did such a. Yeah.
Anything else? The wording, sorry. Prove as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, no, I think I already made it.
Okay, then I'll second.
I think we just need to vote on it, right?
Yeah.
Alright, so all in favor of the minutes as amended? Any opposed? That will put down soon. We're good. And at this time, we'll open it up for a citizen comments. Anybody in the room have anything? This time? No, okay. Anybody online? Yeah. Therein. Therein. Alex, do you have any comments?
I don't, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Donna, do you have any comments? iPhone, do you have any comments? You're gonna.
I'm all set, thank you.
For you. Sean, do you have any comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Teresa, do you have any comments?
No, not right now, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And William, do you have any comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, moving on, we have our superintendent's report.
Okay. You have my report in the packet. I just want to highlight some of the items regarding the budget. You know, as, as we all know, the board held a work workshop on March 28th and adopted strategies to balance the, the 2324 budget within the parameters approved at the district meeting. And I'm in the process of implementing those strategies as we speak. Climate and safety, campus climate and campus safety continue to be at the forefront of what we do. This is especially true, given the recent tragic events in Nashville. And as well as. Tragic events that have happened all over this country for the past couple of decades now, so. You know, school violence is the worst nightmare for community. It's the worst nightmare. For this father, whose adult children have chosen education as a, as a vocation, it's the worst nightmare for this grandfather. Whose grandchildren attend. The public schools and it's the worst nightmare for any family. And we are doing everything we can possibly do within the Hinsdale School District to mitigate that. And maintain a climate where. Everybody feels physically and emotionally safe. As that is a condition for, for great education, great teaching and learning. Regarding professional development, we had a professional development day on March 13th. Which I have heard it was, was successful. In terms of a great learning experience for teachers and staff. As well as a nice reflection on what we're doing. Drummer Woodson Law and presenters from the New Hampshire Principal Academy provided a forum. Education and training with the administrative staff around all types of issues, but specifically discipline practices. Investigation procedures, Title IX considerations, search and seizure practices. And all kind of related issues, and they also provided a. A separate forum for teachers and staff to address some of those issues on a broader, on a broader topic. In addition, we had the afternoon of March 13th, all faculty and staff were invited to participate in a SWAT activity where. You talk about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats to the organization. With the purpose of identifying strength and challenges in our district. Several talented teacher leaders led those small groups of faculty and staff. And. The purpose was to discuss, explore and record. Topics regarding strengths, weaknesses, et cetera. And we're in the process of putting together and synthesizing this important. It data that we can use for the future. And it should provide a nice action plan for the school and the district to improve moving forward. It was a. A great activity that I think we need to continue doing in this district and engaging all, all of our stakeholders in, in, in that kind of activity. A note that Drummer Woodson Law is reviewing the code of conduct. Districtal practices, investigation practices and so on. And they're providing us with a timeline of when they expect to be done with that review. And be in a position where they can provide recommendations to us to strengthen our practices going forward. The tuition exploratory committee. I think we'll talk about that in executives, in a non-public session. But that is moving forward. We've been in reviewing our IDA Title I and ESER funding. To make sure that we're better aligned with the use of those funds. And any related personnel that are attached to those grants to make sure it's aligned with district needs moving forward. We are closely evaluating, evaluating our use of ESER. And making decisions now on personnel currently supported by this temporary funding. We've talked about understanding that funding is going to end in June of 2024. So our strategy is to move personnel. That are funded by ESER. Into other grants as appropriate, particularly Title I. And. To make that. Fiscal cliff that's coming in June of 2020, 2024 to more of a. A hill rather than a cliff. At the, the middle high school. You know, John can talk more about this, but we're looking at ways that we can redesign and deliver education at Hinsdale Middle High School in a way that enhances engagement. In a way that provides increased rigor. In improved climate and looking for ways to do that more efficiently, you know, as we move forward, so that's a, that's a big task and it's a big ask. And you know, we're talking about how to, how to kind of break down that task into smaller doable. Strategies as we move forward, but that, that's happening right now at Hinsdale Middle High School. And John can maybe talk more about that in his report. ELO. You know, I talked about this a bit at the workshop and. ELO Extended Learning Opportunities. Has been a strength of the district. And you know, post COVID, we need to find ways to kind of reinvigorate that program and, and get it moving forward again. So as a result of that. We've, I've reassigned or will be reassigning. The position of director in teaching and learning to focus on reinvigorating the ELO program, really focus on, on that effort. As well as helping us with district-wide professional development. And the development implication of teacher leadership teams to do some work around climate and culture and curriculum articulation, et cetera, moving forward. So we have great hopes for that. I will let John talk about where we are with the ask. We're still working on a dashboard. To, to the board to use as some data. And you can use that as touchpoints, you know, when you need to make decisions moving forward. So looking at, at the distance in terms of. From a 20,000 foot view and get a picture as to where we're going moving forward. That's it for the public session, I'm going to hold the rest for non-public. And if any questions or concerns, please ask. Thank you.
Anybody have anything? No, good. So the financial report. Madam Chair, you have my report. I was unable to give you the March financials at the time this went to, to press, but I did print them out because March wasn't closed, but I provided them for you this evening. And if you have any questions, I'll be trying to answer them.
You want to have anything? Do we, do we provide our annual audit online?
Yeah, we do that.
Okay. We go to sign in as well. Information we have, like.
Okay. I just wanted you to approve it and accept it first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think she go right in order, so we mentioned the. So it'll be right out. Yeah, so this is where we're at right now. I did want to point out too that the. The budget committee had asked for some financial information on a monthly basis and that's, that's up to you guys, I'm not, I'm going to take my direction from you and.
Who asked?
The budget committee.
I had that highlighted.
There was discussion about town and us also doing. Both giving their monthly.
Right.
Updates.
My question was, what exactly?
Like the financials, that they, the same thing we get.
Right.
Yeah, it's a public document anyway.
Right, right. I just wasn't going to agree to anything without, yeah, you guys telling me to.
Do you need a motion to approve that? As a thing?
I just, I think it's probably a good idea to, you know, we're going to have a budget committee rep.
Right.
And you'll be discussing all this information, kind of getting a motion for.
Yeah, this is just, just the consensus. Yeah, that's what my.
Or even send it to the chair.
Yeah. The discussion was to have me, give it to me and then I would send it out to the, to the budget committee chair and then he would distribute it to the. Right, so everybody okay with that, good with that?
Yeah, I think that would help with transparency.
That's.
They would feel.
Lines of communication.
Right.
And it's public document anyway, so. Yeah. Okay. So. Do we need a motion to accept the financial report? No, I think she has audit later on here.
Yep.
So I think that's all.
I'll make sure.
Thank you. So, I ju- just to be clear, I will, would think I would wait until after you have accepted the financial reports each month and then I'll provide it to April to give it to the budget committee, does that?
We don't accept it.
Well, I know, but.
Our packet, but yeah.
Get to look at it first, I would think.
Yeah, and then a group of people. If there's any questions or corrections or anything, then.
When does the budget committee meet? What is the reason?
We don't need to get it.
Yeah.
Probably through March. The media sign.
Yeah. They, they said they are going to meet in August this year.
Yeah. To get a head start on.
They want to, they want to. I, I, my, my feeling was they really wanted to work with us and help. Build a relationship, which is awesome.
I was just thinking about timing, like we have our meeting the first week and then, you know.
This is the third Wednesday, yeah, that's like their set time.
Plenty of time.
Yeah, the third Wednesday, yeah. I think it'll work out.
Let's see what you're saying.
That's all we can give out.
The time between our meeting and their meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, even when, when we go back to the second, it's still fine. Alright, so moving forward, we'll do that. Was there anything else? Do we need to discuss the lunch thing? What's our protocol for that? Our outstanding lunch balance?
Well, you know, we had two years of free lunches during COVID. And. The board, we had a balance of, it was about almost 3,000, it was in the $3,000 range last year in May and the board voted to. Write that off, which made a lot of sense because it was at least two years old. So everybody started this year with a zero lunch balance and we're at. 12, well, we're today, we're at 12,600 and change, it.
Yes, this year.
That's just this year. So as you can see my, my report, there's 176 students with negative balances, most of them are small and they make them up. You know, they go, they go over a few dollars and then they make them up, but several of them are quite large and there's 40 students with balances over a hundred dollars. And. The top 10 students count for over $4,000 of that. So what do we do about that? Well, we still feed children.
Right.
And we don't let them. Um, buy ice cream or cookies on a negative, but we give them lunch. We do send emails out.
You don't let them have cookies. If they can pay cash for it, right?
They pay cash for it, right, so I don't know.
They let them pay cash, but we don't make them put the cash on their lunch.
Right. Yeah, so I don't know what happens if they pocket their lunch money and then charge the lunch and then buy the cookies or, I don't know, I don't know.
Remember when John told them the thing with the ice cream?
Yeah, so we had. We do send emails out on Fridays generally to all the folks that have a negative balance that goes to their emails, but I don't know that they all get them. The folks that don't have emails, we send the letters home. It's been actually really beneficial to have that communication with parents because some parents have said, wait a minute, I've been giving my kids lunch money and what are they doing with it? So we print out an activity report and we show the parent exactly what's going on, they can always look. Get that information also through the website. Titan, which is Abbey Group's. System is, is launched through our website. But I, I don't know what it is. And I can tell you, we're not alone, this is, a lot of schools are doing it and in the same situation. And I don't, I, I, I just felt it was getting to a point where I needed to alert you. And I, I don't have a, don't have a, an idea of how to fix it. Other than I look at it very closely.
When you say you're sending a letter home, the kid is bringing it home?
No, it's, it's, well, no.
You're mailing it.
We're mailing it, yeah.
That's what I was going to say, I'm hoping you mail it.
Do phone calls go out anymore? Do phone calls go out anymore? I, I don't think we've been doing phone calls, we have been doing phone calls this year. So, and, and maybe, maybe that is something that, that we can have the principals do, that again, I, I, I think. Principal time is very valuable and, and they should. It's hard to make them a collection agency when they're trying to build a good relationship with families.
Yeah.
To then ask them to call and, and be a collection agency is, is difficult. But I don't think it's a bad idea on some of these big ones.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea on the big ones.
I think on the big ones, a letter home with no response, maybe then you sort of, sort of, make sure somebody's signing for them actually getting it.
Looking to that. Yeah.
And I know this, this isn't necessarily about unpaid balances, but um, I've just started talking with um, the chair in Franklin, we're both from the NHSB, we were together and he's very active in. You know, not lobbying, it's not the right word, but it's the only word I can think of, the state government and federal government for free lunch, you know, to, to get back on track for everybody. So I'm going to be working with him and trying to, you know, really ramp up efforts with that and recruiting some of the board members and different people to try to do that, and that's not, that doesn't solve this, but it's a longer term.
That's wonderful.
Really get everybody, you know. If we did it for four, then we can't cover everything.
Lunch should just be free. I know Vermont is running a pilot program this year and they're looking at continuing that.
Oh, thank you.
A lot of our.
Into that.
Oh, yeah, Vermont is, so. They have pilots program this year to have free lunch available to everybody and they're in the process of evaluating a continuation of that.
Oh, thank you.
And I think there's some other states that have done that as well.
Yeah, I think I was. Some, I can't tell you which ones, but.
But I mean, it's. We, we don't, so the, we, we're very careful, we don't. Tell a child that's going through the line that they have a negative balance or what it is because that's. Right?
Yeah.
Not something that we would do.
It's not the kid's fault.
Um, so it, it, it puts us in a difficult situation in a lot of times, but you know, we could ask the, the principals to start calling on some of the bigger balances and. But again, there's that relationship, so.
I think you might try to certify letter first.
I like that.
And then if you get no response from that.
Continually trying to contact.
Then. Well, I, I did talk to the father of the child with the largest balance of, about six weeks ago, he called the school at about 5:30 at night to talk to somebody and nobody was there, so the. But the custodian put him over to me and I, you know, I, I explained that, you know, it is a big balance and don't feel you have to pay it all at once. You know, if you want to just chip away at it, that's fine, but since then, one, one child has gone down to no balance, but the other child's balance has gone up, so I don't, again, I don't know what's going on.
Alright, anything else with that? Good. Great, moving on, teaching and learning report, Karen?
I'm sure you have my report, happy to answer any question. Also have a request from student, makes this a lot of fun to view of. Travel ball, there was yellow and something. And also just wanted to have some amazing, it's just dependent to government, so I, I just wanted to make that. He is asking for a rather big request for his exhibition, basically is a certified PMT. Is it, he's certified EMR and he just got to the MTM fam. He'd like to do a simulation, some of what we've had in the past, this is a kind of error. He was able to confirm that Dart will be willing to land the helicopters, have a simulation. All dependent on weather, all dependent on a lot of things. He's working very closely with Ms. Green and I to make sure that the details are worked out. The front lawn, that's some part of the building, that field is a, is a. Already a landing zone for the helicopter, so we would obviously, it, it would happen in the afternoon at 2:15, that, that landed them, you know, we would make sure that Paul went out, the call call the day before, so people didn't panic.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be good.
It'll be on.
And again, if it's weather dependent and the weather, he will treat it just in the way we'll see and if the helicopter can't land, so we'll keep on with the trauma stuff, but anyways, without the helicopter landing.
I know.
So, I mean, you know, I, I think that it's doable. It is, I'm not going to lie, we've got very much, this will be a bit. But we'll practice without the helicopter landing, of course, but we'll do a practice of setting up the landing zone, having a rescue wing connected with. The fire department, all those pieces will be put in place before, and so he just wanted to get your approval for, to do that. We won't, exhibitions will look a little different this year, they're going to be on site for most of them, we're going to do on sites, but, but this one will be here, obviously. So we're looking at May 11th, he'd like to do it before prom, so it could be sort of a simulation. And that will, with your approval, we would do it on May 11th and then confirm with Dart that they're available that day. Like Holly said, they do land there regularly. They don't typically do school visits anymore. They used to do this once a year, they picked like the schools, but they stopped doing that, but he's got an inner rescue wing, he was able to get him to come to it, so. Yeah, I, if you, if you approve of that, we would begin that process of, of the detail, the many, many details of that.
So do we need a motion?
Make the motion, we approve.
I would.
Helicopter for the CLO.
Yeah.
I think it's awesome.
I do too, and I think reinvigorating the ELO. It's going to get people thinking. Yeah, yeah. That's like super. For lack of a better word, in your case, that, that's the load going on, you know what I mean, like, you know what I mean?
I will. This is the big one, isn't it?
Yeah.
There'll be a lot of detail and we will make sure that all of it. That there's a strong incursel that had its time, so that it's kind of is right. For good weather.
Alright, so all this.
I just have one question, because you keep saying it's a big one, which it is, so is there something we're not thinking of a possible negative, I don't think there is, but I, you know, just.
Well, I just think that devil's in the detail of this, you know, when we did the, the other, the one that had the car where there was an accident.
Yeah, simulation.
It was, it would be details of it, and if we don't get the details just right, the helicopter could land at 2:30.
Oh, you know what I mean, those kinds of. Nothing big that we should be concerned, I didn't think so, I just wanted to.
I just making sure that everything is in sync with each other.
Yeah.
I think it's doable.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, thank you. My, my only other comment to it would be, I know an all call will go out to everybody that's involved in this school, but would the community know what's going on?
So our intent was to have the police department know. And I think we put something on the, the sign.
Literally.
Oh, yeah. Condition.
We're just meeting connections.
The morning.
Yeah.
Facebook, I think.
Once I have things updated at time, I can get it to whoever, to put it on whatever Facebook.
Yes.
We'll tweet it, we'll do every social media piece we can, but still probably not the people.
Probably.
areas. What's going on up there?
Yeah, we can share it to some of the other area.
Yeah.
You know, yeah.
I mean, we'll get it out as much as we can.
Again, this is all dependent on Dart and if they, you know, if they have another call that day, they.
Oh, yeah, obviously. Oh, well, yeah, obviously.
Guaranteed.
Hang on, we have to just.
Let me get you to Dartman. Um, any other discussion? Good. So, um, move the question while, uh, any, all in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? Okay. Just gotta go. Any other questions for Karen? Uh, moving on, we have the principals report. John, you wanna go first?
Sure. You have my report in your packet. Some of the, the key areas are, you have the, finally, you had the student wellness survey.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, the principal advisory committee, which we've met twice so far, has reviewed those results. Um, and there's some areas of concern, you know, a high percentage of students feeling bored and tired. We don't want that. Cause we want students engaged and excited.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, other areas of concern of, you know, the use of racial slurs and being treated in disrespectful ways. So we've seen that within the climate and how do we change that? And those are some of the main areas that this advisory group is looking at. Um, and we're also looking at, you know, electives based on kids feeling bored, tired. And how do we get them more engaged and, and courses that they want more hands-on kinds of things? Um, I did send out a survey, but I sent it out incorrectly. It's a high school student, so I gotta send it out again. Um, about different kinds of courses that they would like take. And again, more CDE type courses and things like that, which are more hands-on. Um, a big thing we changed skill set and more of a focus on academics and we looked at MAPS data. Um, and so kids are in three weeks and then they focus on one area, then they focus on another area through the remainder of the year. And then we'll evaluate how schools', uh, skill set goes for the middle school. Um, very proud of the fall sports team. They were the first out of twenty-seven schools, uh, in division four for sportsmanship. That's great. That's what we wanna see regardless of wins and losses.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a, a big thing is that we had the opportunity and to, um, not petition, but the, uh, the asset pool that they wanted to put off for a year. The beginning of self-evaluation. So I put that in. I talked to Mr. Karen. And based on both of us being new to, to look at academic programming. And so that was approved. So we will start that self-evaluation. Not this fall, but next fall. So it gives us time to evaluate academic programs, things such as that. Um, today we had, uh, New Hampshire Theater, um, come and, uh, it was dreamy again, which, which was, um, really the history of immigration in New Hampshire. And it was for the high school students. High school students were fantastic. They were well behaved, respectful, attentive, engaged, and, uh, I really liked it. I'm kind of a theater nerd in some ways. So, and I think it's a great experience for our kids and trying to do more of those things. Um, and get that culture out there. Um, and again, the kids did fantastic. Uh, Friday, New Hampshire Chronicle's coming. Um, and, uh, Chef, uh, Kevin DeShane is, is coming. He's gonna work with the life group. Uh, New Hampshire Chronicle's gonna be videoing kids, um, interviewing kids that were getting permissions from students. And then he's gonna speak to the student body in the afternoon. So, uh, really excited about that. And, uh, I think there's a lot of positive things going on. Karen stole my thunder. We had a student that got into Harvard College. Which are really incredible.
Yeah.
For a small school and has a great accomplishment. Um, I know my, my son tried to get into Dartmouth and didn't get in. So, but his mom may have tried to get in. But he was a top ten kid. Um, and then Connor received a scholarship, um, from, uh, NHIAA. Uh, one of the top scholars for division four. Um, and I think was that a five hundred dollars scholarship?
Yes.
Yeah. So again, some really good things coming out of a, a small high school in Hinsdale. So even though we, we hear a lot of negatives sometimes, there's a lot of positives and we really need to continue to promote that. Any questions?
I just wanna say I'm, I'm happy to have this survey data and I haven't had a chance to like really digest a lot of it. But I, it seems that this is gonna be like a really great place to start working with behavioral support committee again. This is some of the information we're getting feedback on the kids on what's happening. And I think we should resume.
Yeah, it's a small sample size, but we'll be doing the other survey Darren, what's it?
Uh, the Gallup poll.
The Gallup poll survey, so.
Yeah, right after the vacation, that part that was T C P requirement for our grant. So that, um, focuses on, um, students' feelings and home and belonging.
Yeah.
We did it last year. This year we're gonna do it six for twelve, which we didn't. We just did nothing come lunch. So we'll have it. Uh, that brought us some really good data also.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, cause we're expanding the amount of kids, I think we'll have some more, some good data from that. So, um, that, I don't have my own.
And these quotes are fantastic. They have such good ideas. We should take all of their ideas into consideration.
And I think the pos, one of the positives out of that is that they feel, students feel connected with teachers, like eighty-some percent.
Yeah, that was the best data there. I was like, oh, they all love their teachers.
Yeah. And that's extremely important.
Um, may I make a comment?
Sure.
So this data is very important and good. Sorry. But, um, from memory, there was a bit of an issue with communication with the student body about the survey itself, the nature of it and such, and just, um, communicating with the student body, the importance of it. And I think for future surveys, it would be important to be, um, more coordinated, cause also, um, there was some like, uh, meetings scheduled for the same time as the survey. So certain students were split between two different things. So I think just, um, more coordination with planning and greater communication with the student body would be helpful for a larger data set.
Yeah. And this, this one's a difficult Connor in the sense that I had to get permission for students to do it, but you're right.
Mm-hmm.
And those suggestions are great. So, yeah.
I have one question. So this is student survey. I know we talked about us doing a staff survey. We were gonna, you were gonna do it after the student survey. So, um, what's the status of that? Are you just starting to think about that now?
Well, I, I presented to the eighteen, um, potentially staff survey. So we're still in the process.
Okay.
Getting that feedback. We can probably add that information for our next meeting.
Okay. Yeah. Cause I remember that the board wanted a staff survey as well, but we were gonna hold off. We did the student one first. So.
Yeah. And yeah, I, I pulled the survey from the New Hampshire, not New Hampshire, the US Department of Education. So, yeah.
Great. Thanks. You ready to get anything else for John? Okay. Uh, moving on to Joe.
Uh, Carrie, you have my report?
I wanted to say thank you for, um, gathering all the reading math achievement information. It was helpful to see that all together. Anybody else got anything? What was astronomy night? I missed that.
That was, um, through the H E F grant.
What did they do?
Uh, they tried to look at the planets.
Planets.
Timing for the planets were aligned in the west, like before they were still visible.
Thank you.
Try again.
Thank you.
I would also like to note that the high school intro to astronomy class alongside with that.
Right.
Then.
Well. Um, I have a question about the ELO, E L A curriculum update. So, um, you know, that there, there are still continuities to investigate. When will that be? And it's in here. I'm sorry. I'm just reading it again, but when will that be? Like, are they gonna have to, cause I know like when we did Bridges math and stuff, they all had to present to the school board. Is that gonna be the same with this? Like you switch your curriculum.
Far with, uh, with Mrs. Sturgis on that process. Yeah. Um, they're right now on the stages of piloting it and, um, informally, I said, you know, we're hoping some people to come to the board meeting.
Okay, cool.
And, um, you know, this, I think this foster's online. She said that she would be willing to do so. So we're still moving along, hoping to, uh, get a decision by late, by mid-June.
Mid-June. All right, cool.
You know, it'll be late in the year, but like mid-June.
To be implemented next year?
In the fall.
Okay.
And I, and I could just add to that as a pilot, they're piloting, they're, we're looking at three different uh, programs. So they're gonna be piloting two and then choosing from there. Um, and then so to be ready to implement fall.
And are we providing training? How is training gonna work out? Cause.
So they're, they're getting pilot training right now.
Okay.
So they started their training for the pilots. And then we're gonna work on rolling out the PD for all of the, what, when the new, just the new, for things decided.
And will that happen before school, do you think?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're looking at, um, it's gonna be a quick turnaround.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of, you know, once their decision is made, getting the materials. Um, so we're working on getting the calendar in place when we start training. Our hope is that we'd be able to get materials for them to be able to have, take home with them at least in the summer, so they can look it over and become familiar with it.
Yeah.
And then do some training at the beginning of the school year. Um, and you know, we also have the teacher, the teacher leaders that are doing some of the piloting that will help implement some of that with us. So, um, it's a, it's an intensive process and Mr. Sturgis has done an amazing job guiding through it. Feels a little fast, you know, some people. Um, but the teachers voted to move forward and I think we, I think it was time.
Yeah.
I think it was time.
Yep.
So.
So I have a question. So Joe said mid-June. So that'll be after the school board meeting. When we did Bridges, we had to approve it, right? They presented or was it approved by, they were just presenting this? I can't remember. Or like who makes the approval?
Yeah. Just the other day and, and, um, it does indicate for a curriculum, like work and changes, it should require school board.
That's what I thought happened with Bridges. It was, I think Bridges was the last one we really did. Cause I remember like Donna and Paula and different people here. So mid-June will be too late for the school board approval. So I, I mean, I don't, we're just pointing that out. And I just couldn't remember if it's been a while since we switched up a correction, curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But if that's what the policy says, you know, we, you'd follow the policy. So.
Maybe we could push that meeting back a week to then.
Yeah, we'll have to talk about that.
Yeah.
Cause we usually tend to, I know Kim's not available, but we usually tend to move the June one around.
Mm-hmm.
Depending on graduation is the last one. I'm seeing July generally and the graduation, graduations like what, the things or something. So.
So maybe we can visit, revisit this in May at our May meeting.
Yeah. And we don't have to meet on a Wednesday if that doesn't work. Then we could meet on a different day later on, second week or something. Yes.
Sorry, I'm ready.
No.
Anything else for Joe? Moving on to technology report.
I'm Carrie. I have my report. Uh, I would just like to speak to the dashboard real quick that I mentioned. Um, the discipline and, uh, attendance or ADA, ADM information is live. I don't think the URL or the length to it, uh, was communicated in time for this meeting, but it is live and we'll make sure you get, you get the link to that.
Thank you. Now, on, on that, you know, you know, the budget committee had questions about, in what, whatever, um, is there gonna be an explanation of what ADA and what ADM is? Cause I know they probably don't know it.
Well, right now the page is only for.
Oh, yeah. But I mean, when it, when we do it, you know, there was just, you know, when you put acronyms, they don't know what acronyms.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we know what it means.
I, I think I added to the page, but is, is there a plan to make that, that website, the dashboard, public, public?
Didn't they want some public things?
Not with attendance and discipline.
No, believe me, the budget, well, when the budget, I know Ken said it that morning.
Well, I would just say that's not appropriate.
When he came up.
The discussion with Ken around attendance was that we had too many numbers floating around during the process. And for us to really focus on one number, I think further discussions that I had with a different, uh, bunch of committee members during, throughout the day. It was kind of given that we can go with October first number.
Okay.
Because that's why I report to the D O E in my beginning of your report. It's what all of the state reports are generated using. And we just, you know, we can put a last trick next time, next time we use that, it may fluctuate.
Right.
Twenty-five days throughout the year.
Awesome.
We never have huge fluctuation. Uh, what this report or this dashboard will show, um, and there's three different graphs for each attendance report. They'll have, it's a line graph with average daily membership, which is the enrollment number for those, for that school. And below it is a line that shows the trend in, um, actual attendance. Which is kinda interesting to just look at. Cause you can almost spot when our vacations are.
Yeah.
Day or two before, um, it's often lower. Um, and then I have programmed my month and also by day of the week. So you can see, uh, now that you aren't really care to see what days.
What day?
Fridays.
Yeah.
Friday. No, not really. Um, and then, I don't know. I don't think we wanna make, that might be too much information for, for the budget committee.
Yeah.
Over time. Those, those numbers are confusing when we're trying to figure out total enrollment and cost for people and add the other calculation.
Yeah, just. And I had it with everything going on at distributing. I didn't see where everything landed after that discussion, cause I went off and did some other stuff. So.
Right.
Awesome. That makes perfect sense.
I made, I made good notes of what, what we discussed on that day. So come the budget cycle next year.
Yeah.
Um, I'll be able to make some recommendations.
And that, that dashboard is, is, uh, intended to be a tool for the board in terms of, you know, monitoring some, you know, twenty thousand foot data, um, and, uh, you know, helping us to make mid-course corrections, um, if we need to. Looking at the level of discipline, uh, behaviors that, that we address, you know, on a, on a, on a weekly basis or monthly basis. Um, you know, uh, Jody and I talked a little bit more about, uh, free reduced lunch numbers, which are important numbers for us to look at. I think that would be a, a great thing to add.
Yeah. Cause we used to have Deb report on that to us.
Yeah.
That'll be a consideration with advocating for free.
Yeah.
And I wonder how that'll impact. At most.
But so it's an internal dashboard, not in, in to the public dashboard. Good. Okay. Awesome. Great. Thank you, Phil.
That's, I can confirm that the last meeting with the budget committee was the October first date. They were, it was so confusing with all the different numbers again, cause we gave them the number when they asked for the question.
Yeah.
And so we, we all agreed as a group that October first would be the date numbers of numbers we would give them. And that would be consistent number we would give them when they asked it, but ask again.
And, and next year, yeah, I, I plan to have, um, that budget notebook for them all created much earlier. So, um, it'll be all good to go. I'm gonna have October one numbers, like, you know, but, but if they ask me questions later. And I don't have that October number available, then, you know, I.
It should be easy to.
I mean, I.
To memory. Like, you know what I mean? Like this is it. Every time you ask, this is it. You know?
Right.
The one we decided on. Doesn't matter what it is today. Yeah.
Anything else for Justin?
Nope.
Thank you, Justin. Uh, human resources.
I excuse Sarah, uh, from this meeting and, uh, but if you have any questions on, on staffing, um, please ask and, uh, I'll make up an answer. No, I, I'll, I'll get the answer for you.
My only question was, I thought I heard we had, um, hired a middle school baseball coach.
I did the same thing.
Oh, I missed that part.
The same thing.
So we did. It's very small up there.
It is very small.
I did the same thing.
Okay, then good. Yes. See, then we did. The answer is yes, we did fill that position. Perfect. So I was like, why is it still listed here? Okay. Anything else from anybody? I forgot about that report. Um, new board business. Did we?
Maria handed out. I sent her this list of committees, stuff that I had and I updated it. Um, this is some of, we get this every year. So I, I, last year, so I just updated. She put it at your place, right?
It's in your stack here. This, the committee assignment, is that what?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I, I found it in my, in my files, and I just updated it with our, our committees, so.
Do you want mine? Cause I printed mine off at home.
It will look familiar.
Yeah. Alright, so we need to, um, do board committee assignments. You wanna just go down a list? Do that? So, the first one is, uh, personnel committee. I'd like to be on that, I don't know if anybody else wants to.
I, I would like to do that, just because, um, I, Gina and I are the only ones who've negotiated. On, currently on the board, and, and April needs to learn it, cause Gina and I are going off, so I think April and I would be good.
That's what I was looking at, I don't think I can do it this year anymore, cause I'm.
You need to have an experienced, one at least.
Okay. So do we need a vote to approve that? Or do we just gonna say that that's what we're doing? Okay.
I'm happy to stay on helping wellness.
Hey.
Somebody wanna join me?
Yeah. I can do helping wellness.
I would be happy to just not be the alternate on the budget committee.
I would like to still be on the budget committee.
I think Kayla should be on the budget committee.
So she was on the budget committee. Poached you from the budget committee.
Committee, if you would just be backup, anyway, in case I can't go.
Okay, let Kendra do it.
Alright. Yeah. And then staff development, I'm on it, but I'm willing to give it up.
I would like to be on this one.
Yeah, it's just an alternate, Kayla can't make it, then you would go, kinda thing, you do meet during the day, I don't know, like, you're, like, right after school generally.
At what time?
Three, four, or four.
Yeah. Forty-five-ish.
So is it Kayla and Kendra?
Emily could live if I couldn't make it.
Fine.
Is it, is it Kayla Kendra?
Yep.
I hope she saw you said that.
I will text her and tell her I said it.
Um, legislative.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on that, since I'm the president of the N H S B A.
I think that makes sense. Personally, everybody go with that. Hass.
Oh, I'll do Hass again. I would like to not be the alternate, just once we move our meetings up to six, I can't make it before, so I can work with five, so.
Yeah.
I'll go off of that.
Okay. Um, do you wanna be the primary?
Sure.
Does anybody else wanna be the alternate?
You can be alternate.
Kayla, April, I mean, Kendra, April?
Yep.
That's fine, I don't mind being alternate.
Cool.
Oh no.
Uh, selectmen.
No, I would like to go off this. I have, I, I have trouble on Monday nights, anyway, Sean always went anyhow, and like, the one or two times I couldn't make it.
I was gonna say, I wasn't chair, I might do this one, but.
You only have to go, now Sean went to every meeting, which is not what you have to do, if you read the description, this is how it always was, and I love you, Sean, I know you're there.
He set the bar really high.
He did, you only have to attend the meeting, uh, the af- the af- the select meeting after our monthly meeting, or what would happen in our monthly meeting, you can go to.
So one a month.
One, two, three, you can go to two, three, four if you want, but you need to just make it to that one. After our meeting to report on what happened, but like I said, Sean, Sean set the bar, bar high.
I know, that sounds like I am not committing to.
Because, no, they get paid three times our stipends. Why should we go to all their meetings, yeah, but anyway, but I still don't wanna do it.
So any volunteers? I heard Kayla.
Maybe anybody who's available, like, if you know you can't go, just put it.
Just let us know.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm just gonna put anyone.
Yeah, that's what I.
Sorry, Bill, we have this on there.
Uh, facilities, I would like to do this.
Oh, sweet, wow. You know what, this is the only one I've never done in my fourteen years on the board.
Oh, Holly.
So, um, maybe I should, does it, you have to meet during the day? Cause that's hard. Um, I know that Sean didn't.
I'm really flexible, so.
I could try, if I had enough notice. I'll try.
So Holly, me and Holly?
Yeah. It's the only one I've never done.
Community connections?
I would like.
I would like to stay on.
April and I have a good group.
Everybody's okay with that?
I would like to keep behavioral support, I would love for Kayla to join me, and we could band back together.
Yep, I agree.
We started this.
It's true. Uh, joint loss committee, again, I'm on this, but I don't mind giving it up if somebody else would like to do it.
It's a quarterly one.
Yeah, it's, it's not very time-consuming. I mean, I'll do it if nobody else wants to do it, but. How many committees you got, Kendra? I was just looking. I was like, huh. Um, uh, well, one main, and then two, in case other people can't go.
I think this one needs to be on the day too, though, then, yeah. This one needs to be on the day.
At what time?
Usually.
Like two.
Yeah.
It's like two, two fifteen, it lasts about.
You can zoom into it, zoom into it too, cause I used to zoom in, our teams or whatever.
I guess, do two fifteen isn't bad for me, I can do it.
Wanna do it?
And what did you say, Chris, that lasts an hour?
Yeah.
No more generally.
The, the longest I think you've been in.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Then I can just hop to the baseball ground. Okay, that works, alright. Policy committee.
I'm gonna stay on that one.
Okay, I'm good with that, anybody okay with that? Uh, superintendent search committee.
You and I should stay, cause we did all the work. And we are totally in sync, apparently.
Yeah, I would agree with that, is that, that's okay with everybody? Uh, tuition exploratory committee.
Gina and I started this, but.
You can stay on, I think.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't, oh, no, I'm just pointing out, we, we started it back in. I don't mind staying on it, unless, I mean, I really don't.
Okay, so Gina and Kendra? Cool.
And no Holly? Nope. I do have, however, and when we, maybe turn out, probably won't talk about it, I found the. In my files, the, uh, ad that went out to solicit residents, you just have to take off Andy, Oriola, and Maria, um, yeah, pretty much. And I have, uh, so I'm just gonna wait to move on, and, and I have, uh, also the makeup of the committee. What, what, that we had, it can always change, but we could talk about that, you know, can we talk about it?
We'll start again.
Yeah. Cool.
Alright, that's all the committees? Forget anything? I don't think so. And Maria will send out emails to update all the new members with the meeting times coming up.
And I didn't know, meeting times were gonna change based on new members, cause, um, some of them are waiting to see.
Well, then, yeah, that's the case with the chair of those committees, I think, you can just send that out, but that way everybody has. The information that they have for their new committees. Thank you.
And should I just connect with Sean and ask what I need to do for selection, since he did it?
It can't hurt.
Yeah, I mean.
Cause I have no idea what I'm supposed to bring or anything.
You just, uh, from what I remember, and like, you actually tend to connect with him, just take notes, and then, I don't know even if they used to call on him, and he would just say, this is what happened, but he went every week, so.
Right, I'm not doing that.
So, I mean, generally, when I did it way back before, before Sean joined our merry band, um, I would go and I'd say, this is what happened, at a school board meeting, you know.
So I'll just, I'll call Sean.
Yeah. And then dial it down a little.
And then do my version.
Again, Sean, hi.
Alright, so now that's done vacancies, moderators, school district for the Hinsdale, I see you.
Is this informational, Maria? I, we have to do any, I don't think we have to do anything with it, right? They do, or save the link and all that, and then, I believe it goes in the newspaper. Well, I'll tell you something, my own key is because, um, town administrator, that she, that she thought of the ten thirty. And that she emailed that. So I guess I do need to clarify who.
As far as posting it?
Yes, I don't know, Ann posted, when we had a moderator opening before Ann, Deorio did it, so, uh, that's what, that's what my recollection was.
She was the clerk.
Would be school. Yeah. Yeah, so, I, if, if it's, you're talking Catherine, if Catherine, I don't see why Catherine shouldn't do it, if she wants to do it, you don't have a clerk.
Clerk, right.
So I'll double check, I'll double check and make sure, cause I don't wanna like, post if they are.
Yeah.
That's my thought, is that, you know, maybe because Ann was clerk, she did it, and this is where you have both positions open.
Is it beneficial to post this on community connections?
Yeah, yeah, I would think so, yeah.
Okay.
But if she, if Catherine's gonna post it, so you say, you know, contact you for the clerk, she's, she's, or it's either that be Catherine, yeah, so just to clarify. Yeah, talk with her again, and then get it to me and Ap- April, April and, uh, and me, and we will post it.
If anybody in the audience is interested. We need a moderator and a district clerk.
There is a stipend for the clerk, I don't think there is one for the moderator.
No.
I was gonna say, that's the one that should have.
I don't believe so, is a clerk, clerk is three hundred, I think, treasure's twelve hundred. Hmm, I don't know, it's that long ago, I could be wrong, but I, I looked, and I didn't see that there was one for the moderator, did you see the moderator?
I think it's two hundred.
The moderator?
Yeah.
Cause I looked in the RSA, but you, you, there might, maybe we decided years ago to do one for the moderator.
Looking at past history, we've, we've paid, I think, two hundred.
Two hundred, okay. So two hundred, three hundred and twelve hundred. Yeah.
Great. Alright, and then, um, acceptance of the annual audit report.
Yeah, it's a little dense.
The, this packet? In the mail?
Yeah, I got it in the mail yesterday.
Usually I get it by Saturday.
Yesterday as well.
I delivered it Saturday.
I check my mail every day.
I delivered your mail Saturday.
Every day I check my mail. And this was the, and then I had two, I had two things in my mail, I delivered the mail Saturday, and Monday when I went back, it was still. It's my mail, everything is on my calendar.
I delivered it. I did.
Do you use UPS informed delivery?
We deliver them on Saturdays. Before the meeting.
I know, I didn't think I got mine either, but I mean, I don't ever remember to check my mail, we had to get a bigger mailbox. So I won't say for sure.
Alright, so we need a motion to accept the annual audit report.
I'll make that motion second.
Any discussion on the annual report?
Anything you wanna care, John?
It's, it's pretty.
Just what we've already discussed about the June.
Yeah, the, yeah, the, the June, um, something that they picked up on audit, uh, they do a random look, and I did put it in my report. They do a random look, and because we didn't, you don't meet in July, the June payroll manifest wasn't signed up, I brought it with me, in case you weren't see it. Um, but I think that you'll button that up this year by either, you know, it, it's up to you, how you wanna do it, um, we can either. I don't know, we can either do it in the honest meeting, or we can do it through the mail, they're coming in in September this year to audit.
Yeah, instead of having a special meeting.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want you to, I don't want you to have to do that, but we'll figure out a way, maybe email, or just let me know, however you'd like.
Maybe for this coming year, we'll just plan on it for August, at the August meeting, and then, see how it goes from there. That works.
That works.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the annual report? Any objections? Uh, report is accepted. Next is the SR two and three revisions, which we just got.
Okay, so, yeah, so there's information in front of you on the S R grant.
Yeah.
The COVID money, that's just federal government. Um, granted to every public school district in the country. Um, so, so there's a lot of information there, but, uh, there are a couple of things that. Um, I understand in the past that you approved or, um, approved expenditures. So in the S R two grant, um, we're, we're requesting. Uh, the available S R two funds to be used for cameras in the middle high school building at an estimated cost of. Twenty-three thousand dollars, um, and, you know, John can speak to, speak to that a little bit more, um, if you have any questions.
And we talked about this during the budget process, right?
Okay, yeah. No final questions, we asked them.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's valuable to have cameras in all, always, um, with the increased behaviors that we've seen. And it's just very helpful, uh, for sure.
So any motion to approve this for S R two? I'm in motion.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? So moved.
And then, in the, uh, S R three funds, um, there are several, uh, requested amounts there, the English language arts curriculum. Um, we're looking to use S R funds to pay for that at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, the best program, which is the program that helps us keep students in district. Um, instead of paying for the expensive, very expensive audit replacements, uh, so we have money in there for behavioral consultant. Uh, responsive classroom program at the middle school, um, some funding, uh, for that program, the H P A C. Um, the portrait of a graduate work, uh, we think that it's, uh, very important. This, this would be engaging our community on what they think that a graduate from Hinsdale High School should look like. What kind of skills and, and education, uh, training, uh, should they have? Um, uh, in terms of graduation from, from high school. Um, so we would kind, wanna contract with an outside agency to help us facilitate, uh, those conversations with the community. Um, and then, um. Continuing to help with our subpay, uh, where we can be competitive a little bit. And attract subs to help us with, uh, day-to-day classroom stuff. And the COVID cust- custodian continuing that in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, you know, and that's, that's a position that we're gonna have to look at. Next year. But, um. Those are requested amounts, I don't know if the principals have any comments on any of those areas, or you have questions on any of those areas?
I think the responsive classroom for the middle school is really important, using the same language, um, is, is beyond curriculum. It's just being consistent regarding behavioral concerns and things like that. The teachers, all the middle school teachers would be trained, then we four professional development days throughout the year. Um, and, uh, they, they come and consult, and so.
And that's just for middle school?
It, it's, yeah, grade sixty rate, that's where it focuses on, it goes to elementary school also.
Yeah, that's.
At least for their middle school sixth.
I just wanna make a comment about, fortunate to graduate, just for, uh, Kayla and Kendra, when we did our goal setting this last time, um, we discussed, you know. Not, not super in depth, but pretty in depth about the portrait of graduate, butcher of a learner, whatever I wanna call it, yeah. Portrait of a pacer, yeah, whatever, we threw around some stuff, so, so that ties in sort of with our goals.
Yeah, and we felt it was important, um, and timely also, um, the work that we, we, we looked at having casual ownership work with us, and they've done this. I think it frankly.
I was just gonna say frankly, they have a whole big thing on their website about it, yeah.
They do a whole year process where they engage more district planning team, stakeholders from the community, they they try to engage other stakeholders.
Oh, wow.
They do a, a team made up of community stakeholders, and it really ends up with a a district-wide vision of what we want our students, when they walk across it, things like what's behind that handshake, and it comes from all stakeholders, not just us in this room, and they've done it pretty successfully, they even worked with teams, with schools, with students to design the logo of the portrait. And it's just been pretty effective, I know that Franklin had really great success.
Great success, but yeah, and Franklin's not, they're bigger than us, but they're not hugely bigger, like Dover's a lot bigger, but Franklin's probably not quite double. I want to say maybe they have a thousand students or so, at the most, so, yeah. And and similarly socio-economically too, Franklin's, I guess, similar socio-economically too.
Any other questions? Your motion to accept.
I'll make that, oh.
I'll make that motion. To have to be able to make motions usually, so I'm making all motions, right?
I'll second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Or moved? Alright. Sorry, I was waiting here. That's mine. Student board member items.
Hello. In the back of your packets, there's a proposal written up by our president of this diversity club proposing for banners that have the preferred names of students as opposed to their dead names, and we just needed board approval.
So I have a question, I don't know, is it Kim or wherever, but is this a school board issue, or is this administrative to do this? I know there's some discussion, not about banners, but I was at the national convention this, the past week, last weekend. Just the, you know, parents, schools, using things with, with their preferred name, and parents not knowing, and you know what I mean? That whole issue, and I don't know necessarily, I mean, maybe pass it off, because if it's a school board, if this isn't the purview of the school board, because we didn't approve keeping the banners, you know, we we had the one year, and there was discussion of keeping the COVID thing with the banners, and then we didn't approve it, we left it to the administration. If there was money to keep continuing it, we didn't approve that, so I'm I'm not sure, I mean, I I'm I'm fine either way, I just wanted to see whose purview it's in.
I'm not sure, you know, about that, but John and I talked about. Having some discussions, you know, about how it would work, we had some of the, some similar concerns. In making sure that families are aware of of any, any changes that we make. And kind of get all of our ducks in a row on that, and what it would look like going forward, so. I think I I would want to get clarification, maybe from Matt Upden about, you know, where does this decision belong?
When do the banners need to be ordered? Probably not before the main meeting, I wouldn't think, I don't know.
I don't know.
Last year, I was getting close.
Yeah.
Reason.
If I, if I may speak, so there's two, there's two pieces to this, first of all, we have to talk with the town to make sure they're willing to do that, because my understanding, and I could be wrong, the town would care, putting up, taking down the other banners and and putting up student banners, and then the next piece of budgetary. And I know this was done, you know, a lot of schools did this, these banners because of pandemic, but is it now becoming tradition?
Yeah.
You know, or when we go back, it's almost, I thought it was great, but I drove up here in an interview.
Yeah.
Very nice, but. I prefer, I mean, yes, we would need to order the banners relatively soon, but we also need to make sure the town is willing to assist us with this. So I, in my opinion, I think we need to do a little more, yeah.
Some complications.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And can I just say for the name, though, like, most of our seniors are eighteen or close to it, and if it's their preferred name, I don't think their family has a say.
Well, that, but when you're eighteen and you're in school, yes, they do.
But not for your banner.
No, no, I'm saying in general, right?
That is a huge gray area.
You can find yourself out when you turn eighteen.
Yeah, but there's other things that you need parental permission for when you're eighteen.
I think a banner, though, for an eighteen-year-old student or close to it is their choice, that's just my opinion.
I would agree.
There is a lot of gray.
That would be a Matt Upden question for an eighteen-year-old.
That, that, that's, I'm not prepared to to really make a decision, you know, on that, I want to get all of our ducks in a row and have some conversations, talk with Matt up in and and make sure we're on good, firm footing. Before we move forward with that, so that's okay, I think, you know, we would do that, and then if we need, if 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 our attorney advises us that it needs board blessing, then we'll get that.
What do the teachers call these students that have these other names? Are they going by their legal names, or are they calling them by their preferred name?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know, do you know?
I slip up, I try to do their preferred name.
Out of respect for them?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I mean, because I'll, I mean, I had a student the other day, and I said, what, you go by this name? And he said, yeah, I said, okay, but again, I slip up sometimes too, and then I try to, I apologize, you know, but.
I feel like to you, in a yearbook, usually on these senior yearbooks, you put nicknames, or you put other names, just seems like if you're doing it out of respect inside of this building, then it's out of respect on whatever they're choosing to do, I mean, they're, they're graduating high school, they're done, I mean, their parents, if their parents don't accept it, their parents don't accept it, that's who they are, and that's the name that they pick.
Yeah, I mean, it's worth asking it, though, just legally, because I know this was a discussion, not banners, but of that conference, the national, but we did, actually, now, we're saying this, that we did approve before, a couple months ago, students wearing the gown color of their choice, so that also sort of feeds in, I never even thought about it yet. So.
Yeah, so, so we, I personally run into the issue where a student with a preferred name wishes to be called this name, but do not say it to my parents. Do not tell them, I don't want them to know, we have run into that issue as well, I know in our PD day, this, they come up, this very thing, and the Drummond and Woodson mentioned that we have to have a conversation with the child, student rather than at that age, and not child. We have to have that conversation with the students, and it's going to spark a bigger conversation, how do we broach this topic with your family?
When you, when you put the names on the banners, are the kids, are the students filling out the banners and this correct spelling and their names, or are you guys just filling them in? Who fills them in for the banners?
So, so just like with diploma, we make sure we get the correct spelling that the student wants, so.
So it's the student, you show it to the student.
Well, we, yeah, we ask them how, make sure we spell it correctly, but, and again, I experienced this where we had a National Honor Society meeting, and on the program, we put the students, I'll call it legal name. No, we didn't, we put their preferred name, excuse me, I'm sorry, I get this correct, and the grandparents were at this induction. And they had no idea, thankfully, everybody was pretty okay, parents did, but they never told the grandparents, so it it is a major issue, sensitive issue.
I think if the child's willing to have it come out that way, and it's there out of respect for themselves, and they're coming into their own at this point, and and they're willing to do it, then that's what's important, and we should be respecting their, what they're putting out. And 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 who are we to shut them down when they're taking that brave step to put that name out there, especially if their parents are not accepting them for who they are already, and they're willing to do that out in public, so.
I mean, I agree a hundred percent, I just want to make sure we're sound legally, so we, it doesn't come back on us, we can't open ourselves up to liability.
Yeah. It's, my question, it's gonna be the student's choice of what name goes on that banner.
I would think so.
Yeah. That's the, that's the better.
Yeah.
And I think that should be the case, like, dead name, preferred name, all of that aside, if someone wanted a nickname, would we say no?
Yeah, like Mike versus Michael.
Right, like, would you say no, you have to, your legal name.
Right, right.
I think that's the same line.
Same, same, same.
Right, yeah.
Okay, we'll just give me the opportunity to make sure we have all our ducks in a row, that we're fine, and then if we need board blessing, then we'll come back and get it, if not.
Yeah, just let you know.
Okay, no other proposals were brought forward to me, but if you have any questions as pertaining to the student population, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Connor.
Thank you. Did you get your driver's license?
I just did the red test today.
Congratulations, close.
Yeah.
Nothing else happening?
Uh, nothing, no, really.
Thank you.
Thanks, Connor.
Thank you.
We are on other business. I just had something, there was a, a post about Trinity Stroud's sensory thing for the elementary school. And then there was a link to the letter, pictures of the letter, nowhere in the letter does it say where to send donations. There's an address at the front, but that's not exactly, it doesn't say send donations here.
But we don't know how.
Right.
Um, I'm surprised, I was like, she can't do that proposal.
Yeah.
And I think based on the crowdfunding policy that we developed a few months back, that if it goes to the elementary school, depending on the amount size, it'd have to be accepted by the principal, if it was over a certain amount size, it'd have to be accepted by the superintendent, so over a certain other amount, I think it would have to be approved, like.
I think that was for teachers, since this is through ELO as a student, right, does that fall under it?
Yeah, good thought, good thought, but I think it's teachers.
And that's where the, I think the gray area came in, where did this fall under, because it is the ELO, however, it would be a group that would be funding this project, so I think that's where the discrepancy is.
So is the address that's on the letter where the, the elementary school? Because that's the elementary school is the address that's on the letter, I didn't know if it should come to the high school, because she's a high school student, or if it should go to the elementary school, because that's what the project was.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and I think that was the part of the bigger discussion, based on when we built that, that policy of
Right.
And I, I think it would go to the, the site, because the donation would be towards the elementary schools, that would go to Joe first.
So the address on the letter, that's at the beginning of the letter, is where people should send donations?
If I say that right?
Yeah.
Because this is my understanding, when I posted it, is that the money is to go to the ELO sponsor. And I think it said that in her letter, like, what I I asked her, give me, or perhaps she gave me was the letter. Do you want to go before I finish it?
No, we'll let you finish.
My understanding is it goes to the sponsor, so that she can get money for the materials, and then the donation is actually the finished product. It goes, so it's not really, you know what I mean, that's my understanding, and it falls under the student fundraising activities, which is a different policy.
Right.
And in a perfect world, that's exactly what we do, however, we did receive a donation from a local business, they did not want to write a check to a lead vinyl, because they're using it as a charitable contribution, so they wanted to give the check to us. So it was a check for two hundred and fifty, so it fell below the amount, I accepted the check, but I really, really glad we're having this conversation about it, because it felt squishy to me, yeah.
That did come up when we were going, advising that policy about tax rate, we figured that that would come up at one point, did you remember talking about that? Yeah, and that did come up, and now we're seeing it in action.
So, in my opinion, I guess, if somebody wants to write it to the school for the purpose of that, then we can just pass it through, but I'll make sure you guys know about it and.
Well, I wanted to make a community connection post about it, and then I was looking at the letter, and like, well, it doesn't really say specifically where to send the donation, so I'm just gonna ask at the meeting before I post it, so I can get clear instructions on where to send the money if they want to donate, so.
I have a good relationship with that student, I can ask them tomorrow, and then I can send an email to the, to somebody on the board, or to Maria, they could get it.
If we can clarify where donations should be sent, that would be great. Yeah, that would be great.
What is the total that she's trying to raise, you know? Today I got an update, which is fifteen hundred dollars.
And I have, does that include the two hundred and fifty that I have?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I like, and I mean, it might not be the right way to do it, but I like the, the school for the purpose of that, and the school half of it's to lead, rather than donating it, you know, writing a check to a lead, but I guess if you're not using it as a write-off or something, there's no, there may be to do that.
Yeah, I mean, individual donors aren't, you know, charitable contributions, kind of a thing of the past on, on individuals, but unless you're, unless you're doing maybe itemizing, which is hard to do these days, but businesses would prefer that, I'm sure. I think businesses will be easier if you're looking for a large amount.
Alright, so we'll get clarification on that. Perfect. Did anybody else have any other business?
Yes, excuse me, and again, this is not my style, all of a sudden, last minute, but we've restarted the travel block.
I heard.
Yeah, and I mean, that's exciting, and we have quite a few students, that eighteen students that would like to go to Puerto Rico, originally, they wanted to try to do it next April, and I said, we really need to put that off, because it's a large amount of fundraising, you know, over three thousand dollars, and I don't know, do you have this?
Yeah, we do.
And they would do it during April vacation, and then there's twelve adults, they will also contain their own way to go to their chaperones. And they, if they can book it by May first, they'll get locked in there, reduce the price rate. And again, fundraising over two years seems more doable, I originally was not in favor, again, it's a lot of money for a family to raise for their, for their students, but over two years. And our advisors, or County Seven, and Christine Wallace are really go-getters, and so I think they can, they can do it. If one piece we don't have in this packet believe is the actual form that needs to be given to the school board, we'll give it more detail, whether it's extended over.
Overnight.
Overnight.
Yeah, that policy, yeah.
But that's kind of where we're at, we got the itinerary. And I would have preferred to wait till the May board meeting, but then the price is gonna go up.
Right.
So we can still get that paperwork, the, the official paperwork, that can only be approved this trip, so we can start.
Are they gonna be doing, and you don't know, I'm sure, but Cookies and Canvas fundraising, that was their big, one of their, it was
Cookies and.
Canvas, it was paint night, but with cookies, because you can't have wine and step and paint at school, so it'll be cookies. And it was all, that was always a great one, they would bring somebody in, and they'd do, you know, the painting, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Yeah, put a bug in there.
Yeah.
It was, it always was.
Alexis went on one of these trips, and it was, she loved it. So.
And yeah, that's again, it's an opportunity for students to go beyond Hinsdale.
Yeah.
Anytime we can have them experience other countries, other cultures, I think that's really important.
Do we need a motion to accept this?
I'll make the motion to accept, to approve the trip before we go. One second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Just a reminder to put it on the agenda to get the real paperwork next month, yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't forget.
Any other business? Moving on, committee reports.
So, now Sean and Julia.
Yeah, we're here. So here's true.
Yeah, Sean, if you do anything.
Sean, anything to raise a word on?
Getting to this meeting so much.
Whether he wants to. Um, help in the wellness.
We had a Teams meeting a few months ago, and I think we elected officers, I had to leave the meeting because I have another meeting, and I think Joe was trying to make me the chair of the committee, but I don't think that went through, so.
Took feet in at the last.
Oh, thank God. So, I don't know.
I ended up being chair, and Mary Lynn Cross is the new elementary nurse co-chair. Katie Leonard is the secretary. And we don't have any money, so there's no pressure, I believe Brenda Eddinghausen is the building representative of the elementary school, and I think I believe Brenda Ebbinghaus is the building representative of the elementary school, and I think. Being, maybe, is that right?
Jess, Jess.
Yes, it's the.
Did we have another meeting, sir?
We have another meeting, I don't.
Can I say, how often does this one meet?
It's meeting quarterly, but we're also gonna have a subcommittee for healthcare that will meet more often. Have another healthcare.
I could say, she still, I love that.
I have to.
She had the best planner.
Do we want to move on and wait for Joe to find the date?
Somebody want to call Joe?
I'll find it.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get to it. Um, finance budget committee, I think we spoke a lot to the last meeting we had with them, with the budget committee, so. I don't think there's any other information there. Um, staff development. Next meeting is June seventh at three forty-five. And we met on March twenty-second.
You say at three forty-five?
Three forty-five, June seventh.
And where do they meet?
Usually here.
Here.
And then we're just going over PD and what types of PD we're, we're gonna, um, that we wanted to offer based on feedback from a. From staff, yeah, from the last PD day, so um. I think at the next meeting, we were to, we're gonna get more information about that information.
But we will have happened next PD day by then. Based on.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, that was something on that legislative. Um, so uh, I went to the. Um, COSPA National Conference, which you know is the national group that NHSBA belongs to, so, and I'm on their board. And um, and it was in Tampa last week, and so I don't have anything tonight. I have other stuff, you know, interesting stuff I can bring back. Um, and then um, there's gonna be another board meeting in Charlotte in June. Um, but uh, yeah, it was, it was great. There was tons of, tons of sessions and some, some really good stuff. I've got some First Amendment stuff. I have. Some like uh, public social media things, kind of that I think would be helpful. I went to some of those sessions. Um, legislation, um. I didn't take a look at the latest legislative email that we get, um, and I think hopefully you guys got maybe on it, you started receiving stuff from NHSBA. I know Maria was passing it along, so it might take Amanda up there to get her. Get a little bit, you did.
I would have a long list of like stuff that's going to legislation right now.
There's like a Monday thing, and then there's a legislative piece, because that was, but I know Amanda's getting, at NHSBA is getting everybody, new board members on those, so.
Yeah, I don't think I've gotten the.
Speaking of orientation. Oh, yeah, yeah, so we have, um, and I sent the link out, we have the new board member orientation on, there, there was two sessions, the same session. Um, it was um, April tenth, I want to say, and May second, so.
Do I have to do that again?
There's new stuff in it since COVID, so, and it's all a webinar now, you don't have to go like. Yeah, but it's a webinar, but um, yeah, and, and you used to have to like sign up through um, Anne with the signups up with Amanda, but. You can just click on the thing on the link to say register, because uh, we're, we subscribe to their uh, subscription service, so. Um, just and fill it all out, and they'll send you a link. Um, Maria might get something saying, I'm not sure if it does anymore, you know. That you're.
April tenth and May second.
Yeah, maybe it's on the May second. Um, yeah, so yeah, I ordered that, yeah, yeah, because I sent the news that too, but yeah, so that's always good. Um, I'm not sure, I might, I'll go Barrett, I might present it, but I'm not sure yet, so I'm not sure which one, so you might see me on the screen, but. That's very helpful, and then I sent you out the roles and responsibility on training, um. And um, I can talk to Barrett, I'm not sure, they're, they're super busy right now because of legislature, but. To see about even coming and doing some training, um. But to start off with the, the new board member training and that roles and responsibility thing that I sent out, and I think that would be a good start to. Till we could maybe get, get somebody over here. There are, there's like only four people that work in the office, so, you know, as we'll see. But anyway, alright, so that's all for that.
Alright, then um, HASP, our next meeting is May third at five fifteen. I am currently co-chair, does that make Kendra the co-chair now? When she shows up to the meeting, Joe? I said, I know I'm co-chair of the HASP. Right?
Can't find the meeting.
Okay. So May, May third, you got that?
And you, you all remember that would, you have rewritten the Twenty First Century Grant?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. He's like, I'm not, I'm muting. Sean, you're gonna say?
I, I was just waving. I don't have anything to add to any of that at all.
He's like, I know. Uh, facilities and maintenance, Sean, would be Sean again, so we'll get updated on that. Uh, community connections is me, uh, we're posting, you know, we talked about that already. Uh, behavioral support team.
Oh, it has been quite a while since we've met, and we really do need to meet again, especially with all of this new data. Really excited to, to revitalize this committee, so um. Yeah. I don't know.
Do we have any again?
And uh. When is a good time for the team?
Well, I think for Mr. Fundings, it's better for school hour times. Yeah. When I just went to the nine thirty or ten o'clock times. But then that didn't work out, and this is a kill at least.
But it works, but it works for me.
Yeah, I can do that.
I can make myself available during the day.
Yeah, that would work. Nine thirty would be best.
That's fine.
Yeah.
We just need to nail down a date.
Just so that nine thirty on a day.
Oh, yeah, on a day.
Can we find out from Mr. Funding which?
How about right after vacation?
Oh, yeah, vacation is like coming up right here.
Yes, they have a full week and then vacation. So, but the week after vacation.
Oh, I'm away that week.
Way to go.
Alright, so.
For that following week. Okay, no. First week of May, and not on a Wednesday. I'm down. Tuesdays are really good at nine thirty for me. Later days at the post office.
And I'm excited that, because Gina started the committee and. Gina was the chair, I remember, right, and then we had some other teachers on it, and so I'm excited to have all this data to be like, let's. Come up with a plan.
To start.
And, yeah.
Build on.
To build on and come up with a plan on how to address issues from, from, from that committee.
Yep.
Yeah. Awesome, because that's kind of what the committee started with. That was a whole thing was address behaviors.
Yeah.
Kind of thing, we looked at PBIS and that kind of fell out.
Sad about that, I would love to have that come back.
Yeah, PBIS.
Okay. Good?
Yes.
Alright, joint loss committee. We're working on the Student Violence Prevention Plan. Um, and we met on the twentieth of March, and our next meeting is five twenty-two at three thirty. And policy committee.
Policy. Policy, so we're working on uh, the cell phone policy, the committee got the, the meeting kind of got pushed around, so. We were hoping to have it for this, this meeting, the recommendation, but it's supposed to be for the May meeting. I don't have it in my calendar, but. I seem to think it's the tenth of April.
Yeah.
Yeah, March, no, we don't want to go back. Alright, cool, so April tenth, I like fourth, is it, oh no, twenty-sixth, wait, I have it on the twenty-sixth.
Hold on, it's the tenth.
The tenth, okay, so it was the twenty-sixth, and I thought, okay, maybe, maybe not. Am I in March? No, I'm in April.
Oh, I have it on the twenty-sixth too.
On twenty-sixth, what was I thinking of the tenth? Oh, you have both days, okay, so I wasn't crazy about tenth, okay.
So, I don't know which one, but the twenty-sixth, but one, the tenth was, was, what was the March, maybe? So the April twenty-sixth was for April, so. You know what I mean, that's. The April tenth one that has been rescheduled a couple of times.
Oh, okay, so maybe that's why I don't have it in my calendar.
Yeah, so the April twenty-sixth was the regular April one. So now they're gonna bump up near each other, so it's.
So we're gonna have April twenty-sixth, and then again on, on May tenth, or May whatever. Are, are, are we meeting on April tenth?
That's what she's saying, yes.
I thought she said it got rescheduled.
You're gonna have two meetings this month.
Okay, which, which, that's not too bad, it's two and a half weeks apart, I mean.
April tenth would be better.
We better, we can decide on April tenth if we want to meet on April twenty-sixth, how's that?
Great idea.
There you go, right?
Because then you're gonna have to have a board report.
Yeah, okay, I was confused too, you're not the only one, so we're meeting April tenth at four P M.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Alright, uh, citizen comments, anybody have anything at this time in-house? Now, anybody online have anything?
Hi, it's Teresa Diorio. I just have one comment in regards to. Um, the ELO project that you talked about and payments that go to it. I helped a student last year, um, kind of facilitate that a little bit because the project was a dugout project. And the dugouts, well, not the dugouts necessarily, but the field was a town field. But since he was a student at Hinsdale High School, it was decided that the payments would go to Hinsdale High School. With like a memo that was for the dugout project, because people were a little bit weary about just sending the student a check. Or the town back, because they wanted to make sure that it was being sent um, to the school. I'm not sure how the school then handled those payments. But I know that's, that's how it was done last year.
It must have gone to the student activities account, I, I didn't see it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how it went, but I just know that I had a lot of out-of-towners that were. Like questioning, so I talked to Dan, I talked to the school, I don't remember who I even talked to at the school. But the way that we set up last year is with the checks were mailed to the, the high school. Um, and had like a CC with his name on it. Um, just that they knew that, and then the check, the memo line in the check was written out for the dugout. And that way it was done all through the school, and I know here we're talking more in-house, it's elementary versus high school. But because the student was also doing all the fundraising, then he was able to track it. Um, and he was checking in pretty frequently, so just, just a little oversight, just how it happened last year, I don't know. You guys do whatever you want, but I just noticed how it was last year, and I think it was pretty easy for that student to be able to do it that way, but. That's that, it's just my little two cents.
Thanks, Teresa.
Elementary school, parents and activities, students activity, so they can do that.
It's not really a. Right, but it's. Right. We'll figure it out.
They couldn't, couldn't they just do the school district, Hinsdale School District, and then.
We saw it, put it somewhere.
Differentiating.
We can figure it out, as long as you guys are okay with it. Coming through. Yeah, I think Teresa's got a good point. It shouldn't really go to the student, and, and I don't think any of us.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, and even a lead, it was kind of like a.
Right, yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah, just feel right.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else online have a comment?
I think Maria really goes London.
Sure.
Alex, do you have any comments?
I don't at this time, no, thank you though.
Thank you. Donna, do you have any comments?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Jackie, do you have any comments?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, and William, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Okay.
And Sean, oh, sorry.
Okay, Sean, yeah, Sean, Sean. I guess we can ask.
Sean, do you have any comments?
You know, I've been left speechless, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Alright, and then we need a motion to go into non-public.
All second. We'll call.
Yes. 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 Right, we need to take a brief body break.
Yeah.
Before we actually conduct some business. What do we need to, and then who do we need to stay?
Um, I think that uh, from my perspective, we have. I think everyone can go, um, with the exception of Jody.
I have a question for Jody about this. I asked her to look into the stipends for Ann, um, but then. I mean, I.
Yeah.
Is there any other financial stuff for Jody to say, because I know we think there's more than you.
The commission?
No, I mean, that is a financial thing, but the other thing. Anyway, you can talk about it.
Can I have a key to go on?